And we're heading now to the meeting to order, special work session of the Yuma County Board of Supervisors with the Somerton City Council, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, six P M. And, uh, board members will be there. Three of us are here. And Lynn can make it.
Chairman.
Tony might still try trying to find a parking spot. He'll get here. Can we please stand for the page of allegiance?
This allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the, uh, city council, we'll see the Somerton, I would like to welcome county board of supervisors. We have, um, Councilman Miguelvi Alpando, Councilman Juan Castillo, Vice Mayor Lorena Delgado, and Councilwoman Martha Gonzalez. And I'd like to welcome, I'd welcome, uh, Riza Porchas, he, he built this city hall but never had a meeting, so now you have one. Special moment for him. Again, I welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, and again, uh, you know, thanks, thanks to the city of Somerton, thank you, Mayor, and the city council for hosting this, uh, this work session. Um, and like you said, uh, yeah, I, 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 I left right as the soon as the, later on, the building was completed. Um, I never had a chance to have, conduct a meeting from up there, so. But, uh, here we are, and we have, uh, super, uh, well, Vice Chairman, uh, Supervisor, uh, Lyons, uh, Supervisor Simmons, uh, Tony supposedly was on his way, and Lynn, uh, was not gonna be able to make it today. And thanks to all the staff that, uh, that are here. Thank you.
We're gonna start with the first item, comprehensive plan, general plan compatibility.
Thank you, Chairman, and board members.
Thank you, uh, numbers of the city council and supervisor supervisors.
So the current comprehensive plan, uh, the twenty-seven comprehensive plan was adopted by the board of supervisors in March of twenty twenty-three. Uh, so, and has wide range of ability and quite guided on how county development growth and development. Uh, this plan is for regulatory guidelines, policy development, uh, establish a community focus and assist, uh, develop the development community. This map shows, uh, the.
A portion of Yuma County, uh, the area that is enlarged is western portion of Yuma County.
And they. The northeast of planning area, foothill standing area, dome valley, dome valley standing area. So the mandated elements in Title eleven of the, uh, the Arizona statute requires, um, for counties with a population of more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand persons, land use element, circulation element, a water resource element, and an energy element. Uh, the optional elements are the open space element, growth element, environmental planning element, and the cost development element. Uh, the comprehensive plan contains all those elements in addition to a housing element, a public participation element, and a regional coordination element.
Thank you, um, well, the Somerton twenty twenty general plan is the current, the current edition of the general plan. It was adopted by the city council in June of twenty twenty. It was ratified by the Somerton voters in November of that same year. The Arizona statute, of course, requires cities to adopt a comprehensive long-range general plan at least once every ten years. Purpose of the plan is to express Somerton's vision, identify Somerton's goals and development priorities, serve as a policy guide for local decision-making, fulfill legal requirements created by state law. At the time that the plan was, when adoption process began, the Somerton population was estimated at fifteen thousand five hundred eight according to the best census, census bureau, which meant that I would put us in the ten thousand to fifty thousand population bracket, which would require following elements to be incorporated in said general plan. Land use element, circulation element, water resource element, cost development, element, growth areas, environmental planning element, and open space. Followings were optional conservation, recreation, transportation, public services, facilities, public buildings, housing, redevelopment, safety, bicycling, energy, neighborhood preservation. Um, although we didn't have to add some of those elements, we ended up incorporating a few of the optional elements and ended up with total of nine elements in our general plan for the next plan group. So we ended up with the all required elements in addition to a, um, neighborhood element and an economic development.
So, uh, this map here shows, uh, the area, the western portion of Yuma County, uh, which is the majority of the area that's on the west side of Avenue seventy, shows, uh, the different land use information for the north, the Yuma Valley planning area, the, um, northwest Yuma planning area, the, uh, Asa planning area, and the Yuma Valley planning area. Now, this map, uh, shows, uh, that same map, it's got the city of, the Somerton general plan overlay. Uh, as you can see, uh, the different land use information that are but, uh, uh, Yuma County and the, and city of Somerton. Uh, the land uses are compatible with others. The next map will show you a, uh, filter, uh, blown-up area of the, uh, Somerton general plan and its Yuma County, uh, land use information. The area in the yellows out in mind is the Somerton general plan and the area of the Yuma County comprehensive plan. Again, this is another, um, image of, of Somerton general plan.
And so, so the, uh, Somerton general plan, planning area is a total of thirty-five square miles. Um, of those thirty-five square miles, the city of Somerton itself only occupies about seven square miles, meaning we have quite a bit of land left in our planning area. Um, that is undeveloped. You just look at the colors on that map. You go back one slide and drift, please. Oh, looking at the colors, colors are universal just about everywhere, in every city, in every county. But you can see that where we are abiding each other, our jurisdictions, um, green agriculture. That's emphasis on the compatibility that Maggie highlighted right now, and, um, the purple light you see there, that's the future Avenue D to E corridor. Uh, the city of Somerton hopes that that'll develop as a nice industrial corridor, um, with a connection to the port of entry. We had that, all that land was pre-designated as employment land use from agricultural land use at the time we did the previous update, and, um, hopefully, you can see some of that planning coming to fruition in the coming years. And then another, another, uh, thing I'd like to point out is the, the paddle, the airport paddle, the, the, uh, high noise and accident potential zone. It's, it's, you can see a faint black line on that map, but, um, residential development is typically restricted in all areas inside that paddle, even if it's not in a noise contour, uh, which has been a limiting factor for residential development for us. But we hope that with the upcoming joint land use update, um, we can revisit that and hopefully open up some residential development in areas outside of the noise contours, uh, but still in the paddock. And so, as we go into the later half of this decade, twenty thirty is coming up, we're thinking general plan update. We think our, the city of Somerton's general plan will remain about the same, but with some slight changes to what the, or change in county, our growing county. Questions?
Chairman, that's just, uh, the staff's presentation on the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Maggie. Any questions for Maggie or Saul? And, and, uh, well, maybe to Saul, uh, any annexation in the near future?
Um, Mr. Chairman, we're actually working on a action right now to, with some of the, um, areas that, of course, inside of our planning area, we're looking at a big two-hundred-eight acre state land, uh, adjacent to the Somerton Airport, just up, uh, the highway. That's one of the target areas, and a couple of landowners nearby there have also expressed interest in being added into the city, so it, it would be a good time to maybe lump those two together and bring them in. And we're also looking at a bigger scale annexation, but that's more long-term. There is a push to bring in as much people into the city, get the population count up at the twenty thirty test. So there, we are working on that.
Thank you, thank you, Maggie, thank you, Saul.
Thank you.
And before we go to the next item, I forgot, you know, we have, uh, city manager, uh, county, a county administrator, Ian, and, um, assistant administrator Josh with us.
And we have Louis Alaviz, our city manager, our former city manager here.
We want them sitting together. We're recruiting them, yeah.
Go ahead, Josh.
Chairman, uh, here. Chairman, this is Josh Scott, the county administrator. You know, you're gonna kind of tag team this one, but we're here to, to talk to you tonight about a, it's a land swap between the county and the city. Looking at, requires the county is looking at acquiring some vacant land in the city of Somerton to open up a satellite. Have technically defined the surface, it's not there yet, but, um, likely a shared space. And the goal here, as we've, we've worked through this the last year or so, is to, what this is a cashless transaction, so true swap. We, we each kind of hit something in return, but without having to exchange. Um, so the first property in the mix is the county-owned property at three fifty West Main Street. Uh, it's, uh, currently being used as Somerton Municipal Court, and then the county does occupy a small space in the back for the health district program. Down here on intermittent. About a five thousand square foot building, constructed in nineteen fifty-five. By statute, the, the county can't take anything less than ninety percent of the appraised value of properties, so first step in this process is to, to get appraisal on that, so we engaged, uh, building, uh, Yuma to do the appraisal on this, as well as the next property Louis will talk about. And that appraisal came back at about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, one thing I do want to mention is, is the, the county went through a comprehensive building condition assessment last year. The consultant went through all our buildings, identified future needs, things like that. So the condition assessment for this property was provided to the appraiser, so he took that into account valuation. Most of the building systems were noted to be in good condition, nothing imminent. Uh, most pressing thing was probably some trackwork. Seventy-year-old building, so, so there are a few things that are, are gonna need to be done, you know, kind of on the horizon in the years or so. Another thing Louis and I have been working on is, seeing that the municipal court occupies the majority of the building, the, the city obviously has had some expenses over the years in upkeep of that facility. Um, so we're identifying those and putting those in the mix as well to try and balance out the cost. Turn over to Louis, the property that county's got, it's the mayor, council, chairman, supervisors.
Uh, so in the discussions we've had with the county, um, there, there's property that the city currently owns, uh, which is, uh, on the west side of town, uh, is north of our Parkview Commerce Center. Um, so we, uh, provided this, uh, these options, uh, that have, uh, in that roundabout, uh, have utilities, uh, connected and, and subbed out to, to that area. Uh, so we were present, presenting these two options, uh, for the county to consider, um, uh, for, for that facility. Um, if that's, uh, that's potential for the future. Um, and so, uh, this would be the two options that we would provide. Sure, uh, so the appraised value, um, it was, uh, six oh five, I, I mean, five hundred.
Six hundred and five.
Six hundred and five, I was off. Uh, um, uh, so that's the, the current appraised value that, uh, we worked with Mr. Moody on, uh, for these properties. Uh, so, uh, we want to believe we're very close to this, uh, match that we're talking about to be able to, uh, even swap of, uh, facility and property.
Let me touch on the, the potential uses, like I mentioned, we have. Internally, we've kind of talked about things like, uh, utilization clinic during back-to-school time, things like that, but idea would be conjunction, working with the city to identify the services that Somerton of county residents would most utilize, and then we'd look to potentially bring those down, um, at least on an intermittent basis.
And I just want to hit on the site one more time, uh, it is gonna be, uh, if those two potential options, uh, to the right or to the east of that will be our new fifteen-acre pond, uh, and park area. They'll have, uh, potentially, um, you know, open spaces, a community center, uh, pond, a recreational area. Also, right next to that is the high school. Um, and then, uh, south of that, uh, of course, we have, uh, different commerce coming in, but on, on south side of Main Street, uh, which is the lower half, uh, we currently are working on, uh, residential development, uh, and, and apartment complexes, uh, that would, uh, be a location where services, if located here, uh, people can access directly or very close to. And, and right now, we're currently looking at between three hundred homes and potentially, uh, uh, about three hundred apartments.
Concludes our presentation, so.
Any questions or comments? I, oh, go, go ahead, Ian.
Chair, Mayor, uh, just a note, I, I started working on this project when I was Somerton city manager, and just wanted to acknowledge the work of Louis and, and Josh to bring this closer to the finish line. It's been a number of years in progress and, uh, getting there, so thank you, gentlemen.
And, um, I was, I was gonna say the same thing, you know, thank you, you know, 'cause, uh, this, this is, we've been talking about it, and, uh, I, I know we've, we've talked about satellite, uh, either health department, sheriff, and, and other services, and heading, uh, bringing them, uh, to, to South County, so now that's, that's, uh, this is why, you know, we, we, we wanted, we explore this, this, and, uh, so, once again, thanks, thanks for working on it and, and, and moving, moving forward.
Now, there's a lot of, uh, exciting projects coming in that area of, of the city. Uh, if there's a investment coming here in the next couple of months. Hopefully, we can get this, get this going, and, um.
Five phone three, Yuma County major projects update.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, members of the city council. Uh, my name is Frank Sanchez, I'm the, uh, Yuma County, County Engineer. Here with.
I'm Kelly Fricki, Yuma County.
Well, we're, we're briefly gonna go through some, uh, some of the projects that we're, uh, currently working on. Uh, the, the first projects are, that we're gonna go over are the, uh, the vertical construction type, uh, type projects, uh, that's a, a, a new section that the engineering department, uh, recently took on. So, so the first project, uh, you see there is the, uh, Yuma County Administration Building. I'm sure, uh, we all know that, that, that's, uh, that's going in, uh, downtown Yuma. The three-story building, uh, with basement, has, uh, a little bit over a hundred thousand square feet of usable space, uh, that is gonna house, uh, nine county departments, uh, that includes the, uh, uh, elections, public judiciary, communication, treasurer, assessors, school superintendent, county administration, uh, human resources, finance, and the board of supervisors. Uh, we're, we're almost at the finish line. Uh, pro- project is, uh, approximately ninety-five percent complete. Uh, we anticipate to, uh, have a, uh, temporary certificate of occupancy, September thirtieth, which is right around the corner. Uh, at that point, uh, that's when we're gonna start phasing and moving in, uh, the departments with county administration being the, the first department to move in along with communications. Um, the project of that cost, uh, uh, is, uh, fifty-five million dollars. The contractor is, uh, focusing construction. The emergency management building, uh, this is a new eighteen-hundred square foot, uh, building that is being constructed, uh, out at our, uh, Yuma County Public Works is adjacent to our public work department, uh, out there on, I think, five and a half E and, I think, twelve and a half, uh, street. Um, project is approximately seventy percent complete. They are ahead of schedule, uh, the contractor is, uh, Yuma Valley Contracting. Uh, their, their contract time is, is still, it's through, uh, January twenty twenty-six, we anticipate that they'll be completed, um, for Thanksgiving, uh, so, uh, Tony, but the other director is extremely happy. Um, and, and that cost for, uh, for that project, uh, was, is currently, uh, roughly seven hundred and thirty thousand. That was funded with, uh, ARBA funds awarded by, uh, by the board of supervisors. The, uh, Gadsden Sheriff's Substation, uh, this project will renovate an existing building in Gadsden that formerly housed rural metro, uh, project recently started construction. Uh, the contractor, uh, Yuma Valley Contractors is also working on that one. Uh, they currently completed the demo of all the, uh, areas that they needed to, uh, clear out, and they're starting to start the actual construction. That cost of that project was, uh, or is, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand, and we anticipate to have that completed in January. The Yuma County Health Department, uh, this project will expand and renovate the, uh, existing health department to meet current demands of that department. Uh, project is expanding the footprint by adding an additional thirteen thousand seven hundred square feet of new space and rehabbing forty-three thousand square feet of the existing building. Uh, the project cost for that project is twenty, uh, twenty and a half million. Construction is roughly, uh, forty percent complete, and the contractor on that, uh, project is Morgan Center Contractors, and the completion, uh, date for that project is anticipated to be April, uh, twenty twenty-six. Um, next project on that is, um, the recorders, uh, this project will look to renovate the existing, uh, building which is located at one oh two Main Street. The architect is, uh, Chris Thompson with TDA. They are currently evaluating the required system upgrades of that, of that building. Uh, the budget for that project is two and a half million, which one million is coming from a grant that the recorders, uh, give from the state. Uh, we anticipate to have the initial, uh, design report for that in the next couple of weeks. And, uh, the next, uh, project on that is the I T S facilities management. Uh, this project will look to construct a new facility to help house both, uh, I T S and our facilities management department, and we're currently looking at a parcel, uh, out by, uh, B L N parcel, uh, that is currently, uh, adjacent to the, uh, Yuma County Public Works Department out there, uh, five and a half E and, I think, twelve and a half streets. So, uh, N E I has been retained to, uh, develop the preliminary plan, preliminary plans for that construction. But then again, like I said, B L N parcel, so it's taking a little bit to fornate that with B L N. The project, uh, Kelly's been looking through those.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, board and council members. Kelly Fricki, Public Works, Yuma County. Uh, I'm here to provide you an update on the Orange Grove, uh, Rancho Mesa Verde sanitary project. Uh, this project dates back to two thousand and twelve, when the first public meeting was held, uh, with property owners and stakeholders. At that time, it was clear that there was an urgent need, uh, to address failing and outdated septic tanks, leach fields, and even septic pools. But today, the infrastructure committee forward with the construction of a new sanitary sewer system. And the project will include new onsite sewer service connections for Orange Grove Rancho Mesa Verde subdivision, abandoning outdated septic system and, uh, constructing a new drainage station. And it will directly benefit three hundred and thirty-two residents and, um, eliminate the community's reliance on septic-based wastewater disposal. And the system will connect directly to the city of Somerton's reservoir, uh, treatment system, and it will also resolve some, uh, longstanding issues. Will prevent potential groundwater contamination, eliminate leach line issues, and, and improve health and safety concerns for residents. In addition, it will, uh, finally allow roadway paving and subdivisions that have not been paved, uh, due to existing leach lines. So as far as where we're, we are today, um, the final design was, was signed on August twentieth with Sand Tech consulting, and design completion is currently targeted for June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. And last week, on September eleventh, we had our first kickoff meeting, uh, with district and our funding agencies, and a meeting moved and scheduled with city of Somerton sometime in October. Um, geotechnical services began this week on September seventeenth to support the design considerations. And, and looking ahead, several key milestones are coming up. Uh, we'll begin negotiations for critical, uh, wide-way accu- acquisitions, including the lift station and retention basin, and we'll also return to the city, uh, the council here to update the rate and capacity, uh, commitment, and also request that the current rate and capacity guarantee be extended from December thirtieth. thirtieth to twenty-six to December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven. In addition, the district will host two to three public meetings with the residents to share projects of pace and review projected construction costs. Finally, we'll continue to explore opportunities for federal support, which includes working with our lobbyists, USDA, Nat Bank and congressional representatives. And in terms of the schedule, the design is expected to be completed in June of twenty-twenty-six. Funding will be finalized later that same year. RFP for construction is anticipated to be issued between August and September of twenty-twenty-six and construction beginning in May of twenty-twenty-seven. The project is expected to take about eighteen months and would put us back for substantial completion by December of twenty-twenty-six. So this is a major project for the community and one that has been a long time coming and addresses decades of concerns for outdated systems and will provide the residents with modern, reliable, safe wastewater solutions.
Any questions for Frank or Kelly?
On the Gaston Gas Substation, what's the size of that?
We're rehabbing the existing building. I don't, I don't have the exact size, but we're not doing the, the storage area that is adjacent to that building, but if I recall, it's like eighty by like sixty area that, that we're rehabbing.
Yeah, one of the projects that at least the city is more interested in is that Orange Grove Sewer Lane, because as you saw in our standing area, it were limited with the noise contour, so it's only commercial and our growth for, for residential, it's on the west side. But there, we, we requested for the, for the county to consider is to increase capacity from coming from Orange Grove and that'll open up some of our developable, uh, commercial properties there along Highway ninety-five, so that, that's very important for us.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, I had one more item, but I want to. On the nineteen, the new South County Transfer Station, we're proceeding on developing. We're proceeding with the development of the solid waste transfer station, which will be located on a ten-inch parcel on County nineteen between Avenue C and E. And it's intended to expand solid waste, waste services to South County residents by providing convenient and sensible disposal options. And we're also hoping it's gonna help reduce illegal garbage. Currently, the project has achieved the following milestones. We've completed the final design, environmental assessment is finalized, the flat-tail horned lizard survey is done and the geotechnical survey drilling is.
Or the flat-tail.
So the Bureau of Reclamation has issued the county with the land use contract and lease documents. And in October, on October sixth, Public Works will present this project to the Yuma County Board of Supervisors for consideration of the following actions to approve, approval of the final design, authorization to advertise the construction bids and authorization to execute the contract and license for the Bureau of Reclamation. And the project's schedule anticipates advertising for construction in October of this year, twenty-twenty-five and will award the construction in December and we're hoping that we will have that facility operational by the beginning of this year. And we've, in preparation, several major pieces of equipment have been purchased, procured already with additional acquisitions prior to opening. These purchases include roll-off bins, collection and hauling vehicles and specialized equipment to support green wave processing and the daily hauler. And we're planning so far on starting, we will start by opening the facility three to four days per week contingent upon board direction. And over that time, we'll monitor the, the. And then we'll consider expanding by opening up two more days to exceed the need. And so we're excited to open this long-awaited facility that will provide South County residents with convenient, safe and reliable waste management.
Kelly, can you address what, what, what the, the transfer stations receive or can receive?
Yes, we allow green waves, household waste, these white goods which are appliances, steel, aluminum cans, recyclable, and we do not, we do not allow commercial.
Will we accept tires at that location?
Well, we both, we'll, we'll receive tires from the residents and we'll just transport them.
Okay. And how many, how many tires are allowed per resident?
A tires per resident per year.
And, and this is, this is something that we are hoping, you know, besides offering the services to South County, I mean, whoever's been to the landfill to take a, just a truckload, you're in, you're paying thirty-five dollars or probably more.
Right.
And if you take a, any appliances, that it's twenty-five dollars extra just for that one item, for one appliance. But also, we're hoping that it eliminates all this illegal dumping in our, in our canals or the side of the roads. So hopefully it, it, people really take advantage of this and, and, and put it where, where it's supposed to be, dump it or bring it to. So thank you for, for, for moving, moving forward with that and, and wait, many residents will really appreciate that and, and use it definitely. And, and I also wanna touch on the, on the sewer, the Rancho Verde Sewer Project, Orange Grove. I wanna thank the City of Somerton, you know, when, when they started and, and, and having, having talks with the, with the folks on Orange Grove and Rancho Verde, they were excited. It was a process that it needed to collect signatures and I think the City of Somerton really did well on that. And then obviously the, the county took over, so I'm, I'm glad and, and thanks to the, to the board for all their support and continued support that we, we wanna make this thing, you know, really happen. So, thank you.
Evening again, Josh. In this presentation, I'm gonna use the word road a lot. It means more than just the asphalt, it's pretty much everything within the right-of-way, which is traffic signals, signs, sidewalks, etc. As I go through that. Back in twenty nineteen, former county administrator started looking at potential sales tax that could be dedicated to the roads, road maintenance, construction. Shortly after she started looking at that, she brought the municipality into discussion as well, so I'm gonna hit the highlights of those discussions over the last several years and then kind of talk about some of the. So I think everybody's familiar with the, the needs and challenges when it comes to our roadways. Biggest one is, is HIRF revenues. They do tick up and down, but they remain relatively flat. Very modest increases year over year and sometimes we do see, see that drop. And that's primarily because HIRF is based on a gas tax, so it's passed for the nineties, flat eighteen cents per gallon, there's no adjustment for inflation, so that eighteen cents per gallon in nineteen ninety-three is worth about eighteen cents. So, ties to the nation there. Certain years, trying to manage along with those. Because of that, a lot of agencies, the county included, has had to defer maintenance on a lot of projects. Don't have the dollars to do all the work that we want to. That just increases that backlog and then we get into the cycle where roads just start slipping away and getting worse and worse. Then we're, we're all in the similar boat across the state of just Yuma County that we've got aging, got pavements and sidewalks and things like that that are pushing fifty years old and they're just wore out, ask for a certain. So we need to kind of balance the needs with the revenues and that creates a gap, so the intent of this potential tax will still fill that gap. This, this potential tax would be a brand-new revenue source. Statutes allow counties to valid initiative to the voters, to ask them to approve up to a one cent, one cent tax that could be dedicated to roads. So it could be a county-wide tax, involve municipalities. As we started through these discussions, we looked at a one, one-cent tax that was starting to get a little out there and we thought maybe we could get more supportive, looked at a half-cent tax. That's kind of what we based our discussions on at the staff level over the last several. That tax would have a sunset clause in there, it would automatically sunset after twenty years unless we go back to the voters and do that. Then the statutes don't require the county to share those revenues with the county, but we've approached this as more of a regional thing, a lot of mutually beneficial projects. So in our discussions, we talked about sharing the revenues and then we had a lot of discussion about how to split that share amongst the county and the cities in town. We've been a major part of that, you've started working on this. And we've got a lot of history on that as well. There's a number of counties that have had successful transportation tax initiatives. Okanito and Gila particularly, they had a voter pass tax they've dedicated to roads. However, neither of those counties shared their revenue. Now Maricopa, they have their own taxes, they're a little bit different ballpark. Maricopa, as you know, the drama that the state legislature a couple of years ago, they need state approval to, to let the voters renew their tax, but they were successful this year. Based on our, our current estimates, a half-cent sales tax county-wide, we expect to generate a little under twenty-two million dollars. And we worked real hard on a revenue split that would be equitable, but also easily explainable to the voters. So what we came up with was, we looked at the town of Welton and we set a minimum for them of four hundred thousand dollars, so they would have enough to do meaningful projects. Then we considered distributing the rest of that revenue out amongst the, the county and the cities based on. And advantage of this tax is, primary advantage is local control. So only be used for roads, it couldn't be used for any other purpose. He would locally decide the project, each jurisdiction would prioritize their projects and get to spend it as they see fit. We have talked about, you know, there's, there's projects where jurisdictions touch where it would be beneficial to pool our resources, particularly if we're looking to match federal rent ups for a larger-scale project, this money for that as well. And these funds would not be subject to states. So the HIRF sweeps that occurred years ago, whatever the state legislature does, state control, we can control. So we've talked about some possible next steps and as we've explored this idea, we've identified over the years, we've gone through several iterations of the specific project in each jurisdiction, so if we were to take this to the voters, we need to revisit that and make sure we had a current list of projects in, in a priority, priority order. YMPO has offered up their services, we could leverage their services to do some regional studies and analysis, identifying the needs and helping us justify the priorities for our project. Number of those counties that were successful in getting a tax passed, they had an education component to it, where they started early, conversations with voters about facts around this tax. Staff can't advocate one way or another, but we can provide information and identify that gap between the kind of funding needed for our roads and what we get in HIRF revenue, identify our roadway conditions, talk about capacity and those kinds of things that are needed. Another consideration is the ballot timing on this. So statute requires that these types of initiatives go even years to voters. As soon as we could possibly get on the ballot, twenty-twenty-six, the county's got expenditure limitation we need to address, looking to do that in twenty-twenty-six. Not sure it'd be real prudent to confuse voters with asking for a future limitation increase and a tax on the ballot, so twenty-twenty-eight might be a better way to go there. That kind of concludes my presentation, but essentially when we looked at the numbers and the split, what this does for most of us will basically double the HIRF revenue. Somerton, I think it's about one twenty-five million in HIRF revenue. Formula we come up with would give you another one twenty-five million HIRF revenue. The counties, it's a little bit less than that, but for most of the jurisdictions, it's about a double.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, they actually addressed this in our County Association meeting today and gave several presentations on how to approach this and it was interesting because they pointed out that there were a couple of state legislators that did not get re-elected because they pushed hard for the collection of funds to fix roads. So it's an uphill battle, but I think that it's critical. They say that eighty percent of our roads in Arizona are in need of repair at a minimum right now and it could be greater.
Our, our biggest, we've made some strides, ORC has injected some market money into our transportation needs. Our, our biggest issue was additive maintenance, trying to keep our good roads, good, hard streets, hog seals, building, trying to find money to expand that. That, that was challenging, but flattering.
Sure. And, and we're looking at a half-a-cent increase, right? That's what it is? So that will, I mean, would that be like Allen and?
But that would be a sales.
Sales tax.
You mentioned that of the twenty-two million, the division of that money, the percentage that goes to the cities depending on their population. So if you're looking at Yuma, San Luis and Somerton, obviously Somerton is the smallest, so that means we would get less than everybody else. Is that what you?
Welton.
Well, Welton, well, Welton, he said that Welton would get.
Well, then.
A flat. But compared to the other three, we would, we would receive a lesser amount. What is the amount, Morse? Is it one point five, did you say?
Yeah, it'd be one million four hundred four thousand.
What's the highest amount?
That is the City of Yuma, just a tick over ten.
And I feel that when we first started talking about this, that there was different formulas floating around and so we had a retail study that ninety percent of our, we have. so we had a retail study that ninety percent of our, we have a ninety percent leakage to San Luis and Yuma. So by population, it would benefit Somerton more because we're counting the population. If it was sales tax, our sales tax is two million revenue compared to Yuma where fifty million. So population based formula works for a city the size of Somerton.
Yeah, and to that, Mr. Mayor, we looked at this based on where the taxes are collected. Add it based on lane miles of roadway. We looked at it based on how HERF revenues are split. We looked at it a lot of different ways and really didn't impact anybody too much other than the county. So getting hired in most of those other scenarios, that reason. Their road network, they have a lot of four or five million arterial roadways. They have a lot of lanes that is a question. Again, I think population is an easy one to explain to the voters, you know. And we would reevaluate that at every new census and, you know, look at that and adjust that distribution.
And this is something that it'll be one and a half million of the city of Somerton or as years go by. Will that equation be calculated every so often or we'll stay with that?
Yeah, we anticipated just adjusting it based on the new census numbers when they come in.
Oh, okay. So but anyways, I mean, it's one and a half million for the next twenty years, which is.
Per year.
Per year, uh huh, that will, it will definitely help all the cities in the county. Much needed, which is much needed. And I think, excuse me, you know, by sharing, sharing the money, like Scott mentioned, the, all the, I mean, Josh mentioned, all the other counties that don't do, they just keep it to themselves. I think this is, this is a perfect example to show the state how the county and with the municipalities within the county work. You know, how closely we work together and be an example to the rest of the state, to the rest of the counties. I mean, I think that'll, that'll definitely show how Yuma County and what the municipalities work.
I think it was kind of a no brainer for us, right? I mean, the county's roads connect all our cities and the town.
Yes. You know, in two thousand and seven, the city of Somerton went out to the voters for a second property tax. And remember, Councilman Vialpando at that time was mayor and I told him, because we came into the city council in two thousand and five and in two thousand and five, we started it. So I told him, I said, you know what? We need a property tax, second property tax. And he looked at me and he said, you know, if you want to do it, I'll back you up, you know. But I don't, you know, I don't know if we'll be here in the next, after four years. I said, hey, that's the only way. We cannot rely just on grants. Passed and I think many throughout the city, a lot of new streets that have been.
Ninety percent of our streets are. Except for this, we're waiting on a grant. But drive around, all our streets are.
But, but we, you know, when we, when we decided to do that, we said it's strictly for roads. And we went out to the voters and had a good committee that relayed that message that it was going to be for roads. So I think we will, for, in order for this to pass, I think we definitely need to educate the voters and tell them, you know, it's really much needed. And I think, I think we'll do a good job, but we need all the support from all the cities and, you know, the counties, so.
And that's important because the cities need to get different stakeholders at that time. When the secondary tax, that's what we got here in Somerton, just different people from different groups and just supporting the, yeah, for Somerton. And same thing with this, when we can get people from different cities, from different entities and agencies and just get a good group of people just.
We met with Yuma County, talked about their tax and it did receive broad support. Bringing in community advocates, you know, to educate them to go out, help this out, meet for it.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
The last item, road projects. Avenue E D Quarter and County Seventeenth Street from D Avenue E.
Thank you. Actually, it was a perfect segue into this next item because pretty much, pretty much all those projects up there, except the last one, are fairly funded. We've been very proactive just because our HERF budget doesn't get us very, very far. So we've been very proactive going out and applying for the HSIP project, STBG project. We're working hard on trying to get a, back then it was a race grant for the Avenue E D Quarter project. Now it's the build grant and so we're proactive in trying to secure this for that construction. But that just goes to say that, like Josh was saying, eighteen cents a gallon back in ninety three doesn't kick you much now, which you place at about eight.
Frank, let me, let me stop you there. I think Tony found a practice spot. Welcome, Tony.
Welcome, Tony.
We start all over? So, yeah, just want to reiterate, all these projects are fairly funded. Avenue E D Quarter project, a lot of interest on this project. That's been in the books for a while now. That originally started with an initial grant that was a TBI grant. That was awarded to the county to evaluate some alternatives for this new corridor. We have since progressed and we're now moving to finalize the design plans for that. Should be finalizing those plans within the next month. And so we're working, or some of this are consultant and they're working with the Yuma County water users to identify all those facilities that need to be relocated. The irrigation district wants to do that work. Obviously, we'd have to pay them, but they, they're interested in relocating their own facilities. There is a lot of work, so that's, that's still some discussions with them if they're going to be able to handle all that. Our last application for the bill grant was unsuccessful. We're working on scheduling a debrief with SHWA to find out exactly what we can improve on, on that application. And we're going to resubmit again in January of twenty twenty six. Because if you don't know, that cost estimate for this new corridor is up to twenty six million dollars to construct that new corridor. The board, as part of our CIT program, has allocated some money so that we can start the right away acquisition. And somebody earlier mentioned that Black Tail Hornet or that, yes, we're going right to their. That's going to cost a pretty penny with some rear renovations to secure that right away.
Thought and boom, before we get there.
So the next project that you see there is the Somerton Avenue and County Ten and the Quarter Street Bridge. We did receive one point three million from the state to replace this, this bridge. Coincidentally, this was an exact bridge that we replaced on Avenue Three E. It was still, still beams with corrugated steel planking with asphalt overlay. So every time a truck goes over it, the beams flex and breaks up the concrete and consequently, public works is out there closing the bridge once or twice a year repairing the concrete. So it was important to get that replaced. We did receive the one point three million. We're working with core engineering to issue them a contract for the design for that project. You anticipate, we might, we'll probably have to end up closing that bridge for about two months to get that completed. A little bit different than the Avenue Three E Bridge, where we were able to construct that with box over. However, the flows in this canal are a lot bigger. There's not enough time to reconstruct that with box over in that ten day outage. So we're going to actually build a bridge to span the canal. Next project is Highway ninety five Millenfield. The first phase was completed from San Luis to County Twenty Third Street, all the way up to, what the project, the original project limits was County Seventeenth Street. The board did allocate an additional one point five million. And so we were able to extend that, the limits to that project out to Avenue H, H and the Quarter. So second phase, we're working on the plans right now. It'll take from, continue from Avenue H and the Quarter through Somerton all the way to Avenue D. Where we're working with YMPO. We've identified this as one of the top regional priority projects. So we're looking to see if we can get some funding through YMPO. We're also working with Alejandro Piroa, our management that they's on, and trying to get some state funding. Rational direct spending funding. And so what we've identified this project through the city of Somerton as a priority to get this project funded. It's a Millenfield, remove asphalt, put asphalt down and similar to phase one. Next project there is the Avenue G, Highway ninety five to County Eleven Street, shoulder paving and rumble strip. That, that project, it got, ADOT reached out and they had, due to some funding issues that they had, they had to move out some projects. This is one of the projects that they moved out to, to school here twenty seven. So essentially, they're, they're looking at bidding this project July of twenty twenty six. We're just looking at paving the shoulders on Avenue G, putting in rumble strips and be striping. That's from ninety five to County Eleven Street. County Fourteenth Street at Avenue G and at Avenue C, traffic signals. That's another HSIP project that is going to put in traffic signals at Avenue C and Avenue G. There is some widening that we're going to have to do on County Fourteenth Street at Avenue G. Those plans are pretty much done. We do have to send, the project at County Fourteenth and Avenue G was a little bit over the estimate. We are going to have to send ADOT some additional funding so they can go ahead and bid that project. The one that Avenue C was under, underestimated. So once, once they get that, that funding or that checked, so we can be ready to bid those two projects out.
Frank, on the Avenue C, that's, Avenue C is, you're talking ninety five and Avenue C or?
No, no, it's County Fourteenth.
County Fourteenth, oh, okay, County Fourteenth, yeah.
And my apologies, I left Highway ninety five and, no, 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 I skipped it, my apologies. Highway ninety five at County Sixteenth Street. That is the, what was formerly known as Avenue C by the airport. That, that project got pushed out because of the issues we had with the airport. ADOT just recently issued the new contract to the consultant, so they're on board now. They're, they're starting the design for the signal that is, if everybody's familiar with Highway ninety five intersection by the airport, we couldn't design the traffic signal because of the elevation of the signal poles. So because of the proximity of the airport next to the intersection, we had to move the intersection to the west. Two or three hundred feet to the west, so we had to avoid the approaches of the airplane to the landing strip. That does entail having to buy additional right away from state land. They own that parcel just, just south of Highway ninety five where we're going to have to make that connection. The consultant's already started the communications with state land. And so we're in the process of determining whether or not they're going to need some archaeological and cultural surveys for that. We're hoping that if they don't, it's a small little parcel. But that, that, that project is kicking, kicking off.
Kick it out. I heard you say kick it out and I was going, oh. You're going to bust and they're moving. It's been a while. I mean, that's a project that we thought was going to get done this year, but was moved because of the landing, landing pattern that the airport had. Traffic teams will be too high for them to land. So guys, we're thinking about you. Go through that, I'm thinking of you when I go through that, because every time you turn, there's a possibility that somebody's coming up the hill really bad.
Yeah, they blame us for it too, so. I hear it.
That's, that's really the way it is.
But and if you, if you really go back, that, that road, there's a road that goes to the landfill. That's where it used to be. You, you used to turn there to get to County Sixteen. And either you turned, you went into the landfill or you kept going to.
You could see it. The way it is right now, we need to.
Yeah.
Really slow people down. Get out. Thank you.
The next project, County Eleven Street and Avenue G Intersection Realignment Project. The board knows that we bid that project out, ADOT bid that project out. There was one bidder and it came in five hundred thousand dollars under. Yeah, that's pretty unheard of, but it came five hundred thousand dollars under the bid estimate. Unfortunately, that one bidder that bid the project made a mistake on their TBE percentages and their paperwork. So ADOT had to reject their bid and we had to go back and rebid the project. So ADOT is advertising right now, it's out to bid. A bid opening is September twenty sixth. We're crossing our fingers that it comes in somewhat. Close to that original bid.
It's better that way because if you give it, give a bid. Take it, that's when you're in trouble, you're in trouble because your project's in trouble. Even though it's delayed a little bit, it's better this way. That's we're going to get a tour, that's going to cost.
Well, we'll have, we'll have an update on the bid here shortly on. This, if you're not familiar with the project, is Avenue G and County Eleven, there's a, it's a, it's a blocked intersection, but the majority of the traffic that goes. We're going to add a curb on there similar to what we did on County Eighth and Somerton Avenue. Where it's a curve and there'll still be access to the other leg of that intersection, but the majority.
Just, just say Morgan.
I remember him laughing and he's saying, oh, you do have a traffic signal in your district. That lasted about two years.
I said, my, Morgan.
It's in his district now, so.
Yeah.
And, uh, the next project, Kelly's gonna go over that.
This year, public works, we filed a project seventeen, uh, where we tested a new, uh, liquid enzyme soil stabilizer in the County Seventeenth there. And the goal was to create a harder surface, uh, more durable than one that's treated with naphloride. This naphloride is primarily only used for dust control. But according to the manufacturer, permazyme, uh, is supposed to transform the native soil into a hard surface that requires less maintenance. That was what we told them. Uh, however, since applying the permazyme, we, we applied it in March sometime. Um, the results have been disappointing. Uh, near Avenue B, uh, we noticed ravelling and loose rocks and early washboarding. So, uh, and then also dust control was, was minimal. And the areas with frequent breaking and acceleration were, uh, more, uh, areas. So on May twenty-ninth, we treated the road with, uh, naphloride to help stabilize the surface. And, well, this, this, you know, provides temporary improvement. Um, ongoing traffic, you know, the recurring breaking and acceleration still causes problems on that road. So we've determined that maintaining it regularly, um, based on what we observed, our maintenance, uh, plan going forward will include applying naphloride twice a year in the fall and the spring. And then, um, along with routine grating and watering every six, seven weeks. So while we hoped for a better outcome with permazyme, um, we'll continue our regular.
Any other questions for Frank or Kelly?
I just want to thank you for trying. That was a pro-, that would've been a problem, that's a problem. We have an E P A problem. It still wanted us to be under some control, the E P ten. Been a problem.
So, uh, September thirtieth, um, we'll be sending out an invitation to attend a letter with the Alms Budman from the White House. Um, and they're coming and they will bring the Regional Director of E P A and a few others so that they can remove us from the P M ten and start that process.
We've been trying for years.
September thirtieth.
Hello, we can't control what happens in the state or Mexican.
Last week while I was in Taiwan, I met with Danny Sidon, who runs the, uh, Arizona, um, Chamber of Commerce. And Danny left us in Taiwan, went and spoke on the Hill and spoke against, uh, the E P A's regulations. He then, uh, was contacted by the Alms Budman. And, uh, this is the particular individual who helped Lee Zeldin remove the diesel restrictions, uh, three weeks ago. And so he's quite knowledgeable about how to approach this. He called me two days ago, asked if we wanted help. Uh, I.
Kind of feeling like you're Dylan Neo this stuff.
Telling everybody.
Okay.
Telling everybody, yeah. This is the first time that I've had the opportunity. I reached out to Ian to schedule a specific spot. Uh, we'll invite, um, all of the county to come and participate, uh, all of the cities, uh, as well. And we're hoping, uh, tomorrow morning, I'll meet with Alejandro and Development Services, uh, so that we can, uh, put a plan, uh, together. Martine, I wanted to be able to get that completed first before I presented it to you so that we can have that ready to go on the thirtieth.
Another thing to this, doesn't the E P A is, uh, that section of the Colorado River with the City of Yuma that's impaired? And there was a letter years ago from, uh, the A D Q Director removing it because it was, uh, impaired for selenium, has been tested and it's been under, for years been under the, the level. So they do a lot of the, uh, test, the extra testing and extra monitoring.
We can agendaize that at that meeting on the thirtieth.
Yeah, that, that would be important.
City of Yuma?
Yeah, City of Yuma.
Thanks for looking out for them. I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna propose we give them less on the revenue sharing for the taxes on the road and give you guys more.
You know, uh, I just wanna, um, Avenue, the Avenue E and D, well, not, not D, but the Avenue E corridor. Um, I do wanna give kudos to Tony because in, I think it was like in two thousand five, two thousand six, he brought it up and said, you know, you sit on the Y M P O when I was, uh, I was with the city of Somerton. And, um, he said, bring that up because if it's not on the general plan for the twenty-five year general plan, we'll never get it. So I, I, I do recall on a trip to, uh, to, uh, Wakeup.
It'd be, before twenty fifteen.
Was it ninety-five?
It was like.
Hey, thank, thank you, Frank, thank you, Kelly. Well, closing remarks. Um, you know, um, I, once again, I want, I wanna thank, uh, the, the board because, uh, we honestly, I don't, I, I, I know I don't say it enough, but I, 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 they know it. Uh, this board really works really good together. I think it's probably one of the best boards that's been there for a long time. Um, and, uh, we, we, you can talk to, not just because Supervisor Lyons doesn't represent Somerton, but he represents the county, if there's issues, you can ask him or, you know, um, tell him something. Advice with Supervisor Simmons, Supervisor Tony, there is the same thing. I think we, we, we're all in it for the county for, for, so, uh, any time you have any questions, you, you can call whoever you, you, you call. I'm positive that, that will help.
We'll get it done and, and I wanted to emphasize this. This has been a very eye-opening sequence for me this past few years with, uh, my team members of the chairman because he's, he's, he's now real, there's now realization that Somerton is actually the middle of South County. At San Luis, San Luis is actually the edge. So I wanna, I want, I want everybody to know that because of his efforts and Ian's efforts, there's a lot of attention being paid to Somerton as, as, as a South County that wasn't paid when I wasn't, when I was the supervisor, when I was the chairman. I was the chairman of supervisors. Because as much as we wanna say differently, we all think about where we were born, where we raised. And, and it's been an eye-opener to me to see the city of Somerton move the way they have moved. They have been extremely visible and a lot of the pride that are there because of the effort that it's made over the last few years to make sure that Somerton is being paid attention to. So you guys can feel proud of the way it's being represented at the board, not only because the chairman is in Somerton, but also because Somerton's getting a lot of attention, as you can see. Not just because he's there, but because we all think Somerton is an up and coming city. I've been pleasantly surprised to see all the developments that happened in Somerton. It, it, it was a sleepy old little town when I was the mayor of San Luis, but now it's a thriving city and I wanna make sure that the new administration or the administration now that is there realize just how much attention we're paying to it. We pay a lot of attention to you guys. So it's really, it really is an eye-opener to me to see the type of cooperation that can be between a city, a small city and a, and a county. Because this county is made up of basically, to me, the smaller cities. I know the city of Yuma can take care of themselves, they're metropolitan area. But the smaller communities, what we did for wealth then a, a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, we intend to do with smaller communities as much as we can, which is to help and support you whatever project you have. I think I can close that.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. And, and, you know, just for, for the, those of you that don't know, we have Supervisor Lyons, uh, he's the chair of.
Seen some of you guys there at meetings before.
So, you know, that's a, we're, that's, we're, we're lucky to, that, you know, when there, if there's any issues or concerns or questions. You can, yeah. No, we don't have no tacos.
Yeah.
And, and, and again, to the city of Somerton, to the mayor and council, thank you, to the staff. Bill, thank you for being here. Bill, our, our county attorney. And, uh, Deseray, thank you. That, Mayor?
And, and I wanna thank the board for, for coming. This is, since I've been in council since oh nine, this is the first time we've met with, uh, the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, appreciate and as we see, we have a lot of projects that we can work together. Staff here that, uh, it's a special interest, like I said, that sewer line, that, uh, Highway ninety-five Millenfield, that, that's something that, that, that it's needed here for, uh, for community, for transportation. And that, that, the Avenue D corridor, that's something that, the first thing I, when I met with Mayor Rydel from San Luis, first thing she mentioned was that, so that's a priority for South County. Since the Ash was built, Somerton was bypassed by Highway ninety-five, so that's gonna open a lot of the economic development here for South County. So appreciate all your efforts for all the hard work and, um, and hope for the.
Just, uh, may, uh, follow up and a comment on, on Ash ninety-five. That was a sales tax that the county, uh, proved for, for.
Sixty-three million dollars.
For Ash, Ash, Ash ninety-five, Highway ninety-five. So it can be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tony, you've been quiet.
Do you appreciate everything that the county does for us? I mean, uh, as we know, we have to take county roads in order to access Somerton. And so it's vital, your support is vital. And, uh, I agree with you, I think the tax is much needed to support not only, uh, not only our inner city streets, but also the country, which that's what feeds us. And so one thing I do, and I mentioned it to Ian, I whisper, whispered it to him, it's like, we need to start planning. We're putting a lot of, uh, stoplights on Highway ninety-five, which is kinda slowing down the traffic. Uh, we need to learn from larger cities like the Phoenix area. They have their loops, we need to start forming some type of plan for the, our cities. Now, it's, uh, so we need to come, uh, come up with a plan in order to move all the, all the traffic smoothly. And eventually maybe consider tying, finding a way to tie into.
High eight from the west side.
Those are just thoughts that were going through my mind as we spoke about traffic and about all the stuff that you guys going on. You guys, you guys do a lot in the, at the county level. I really appreciate it.
The council members? Ian?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm trying, Mayor. And when, when I was looking at the presentation and everything for the half percent increase, like if it's half percent, why is it like four percent? I mean, we just educate our, our, our residents, our constituents about the importance and, and then the benefits of it. I mean, it's, I mean, it'll, I'm assuming that the projection would double, right? To like, like forty, what was it, uh, forty-two? Forty-two something, right? So, uh, you know, I, you know, if it's a one percent, I mean, it's, it's, uh, I think the benefit, uh, would, would, would be well worth it.
So. Gotta get past that one thing that they hear every time, that one word, act.
Point zero zero five sounds more digestible.
Gotta learn from the city of San Diego, try to fight the property tax. They didn't do a good job of selling it.
I think if you guys tied to road infrastructure, to something very specific. I think that's what was, that's what, you know, city of Somerton. Our roads were awful. But let's face it, our roads were awful. Now.
I'm sure if. I never thought it'd get so much grief out of improvement if, uh, if I got out of Highway ninety-five being improved always before you got to Somerton. I get so much grief about why did it stop there? I keep telling them, well, there'll be a second phase.
We'll go to the same places, huh?
But I don't understand that because I think that, and when we think about the county, we think about the whole county. Obviously during the campaign trail, I, I, I took a lot of credit for it, but in reality, it's the board's. And Highway ninety-five was a trade-off. Most of you who weren't here at the time, we traded off Highway ninety-five going this way for the Highway ninety-five going the Ash freeway. But in reality, that happened because the bus sales tax and it's a tax for.
Ian, that's where you could use those examples to encourage people voting, voting for it. I mean.
We learned from Callexico, which, where, where you don't connect those portal entries to a freeway. What happens is the economic development doesn't happen. Yeah. County's been very, very.
People will see that, though, and they'll understand, I mean, they hopefully they're supported.
I've been around a long time and I tell me, how long? But I tell you, this, I never seen the mood that these people are now when it comes to taxes. I mean, we select most of our elections during the winter, so, in November, October, November, and that's when the winter comes around here. They don't really think it's sort of cool, they don't really, you know, they will say they don't travel too much to San Luis. So it's going to be a tough hole to do it. But the legislature has given us the opportunity to do that, so we can use it. That'll be, you gotta sell it, well.
I was, was mentioning here earlier that when we passed the property tax here in Somerton, it was a diverse group from different groups of, maybe not political, but here in Somerton, different groups that voted for certain candidates, get all those groups together agreeing on, on the same end that get their constituents to, to. So that, that's what we're gonna do here in the county, for both parties, from different groups. It just, everybody have a united front and, and explain the benefits to each community.
Well, you guys did a great job selling your property tax. I know because I'm South County and I know in San Luis you came and tried, fell, like, hey, because it wasn't sold the right way. When you have tied to a specific project and you say, well, we're gonna collect this to do that. You guys did a great job of selling that project. I, I myself think that it's not the right mood, but it can be changed with, you know, with, uh, with a lot of work and dedication. I think you guys are ready. We think, I think we're ready this way. Challenge, but, I mean, I'm not sure, I think we are ready and I'm not sure that the president is as ready as we are. Just sell it.
Yeah.
Can you show them a before and after picture of roads and everything? What, what happened?
One, the picture, we better take a picture right now before you guys get the grant.
Listen to that airport.
Yeah. Seven twenty-seven meetings adjourned.
Thank you.
And, uh, we have, uh, different food from eateries here in, uh,